Policy Subcommittee Meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
So I was hoping for a motion, yes?
Yes. Um, I would like to make a motion to take the agenda out of order and begin with policy JJICA, Athletic Eligibility High School Transfer Policy.
Okay, second that motion. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, so I know we have Ms. Colleen Peterson and Attorney Gallo here to kind of walk us through the proposal for JJICA, which is Athletic Eligibility, Eligibility High School Transfer Policy, so.
Sure. Thank you Chairperson Dugan. So about three-quarters of the way through the packet in front of you, because they're in order, is JJICA. You'll see a page that says summary regarding JJICA, and I'm just going to give a couple intro remarks and then turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Peterson. A lot of thought went into this draft. Deputy Gores, who's here with us tonight, helped with the drafting of it, as well as Colleen and myself. There was a pretty rich feedback process with principals and tweaks and edits made based on principal feedback, and all of the A.D.s agree with the policy that's before you. Mr. Dick Newton is behind me. Having been in a room with Dick and his two colleagues, I can say that it's not always the case that all three A.D.s agree. On this particular occasion, they do.
All right.
Just a broad... We're starting off with some...
You should just run with this, right? All right.
That works. So, so, um, the, the, the next page after your summary shows you the current vote and policy, and it was done years ago and without the benefit, I think, of working with Dorothy, frankly, at that time. And what was voted on in two thousand and ten was a policy with no appeal, and then immediately after that, a vote that contradicts the policy by inserting an appeal procedure within the minutes of that meeting. And so that is where we're at today. What this lacks are any articulated rules, standards, rationales, articulated exceptions to the policy. And so what this draft attempts to do is do all of that, but I want to be very clear about the result. The result, if this is adopted, is there are articulated rules, standards, and rationales; there are limited explicit exceptions; there is no more committee system, and there is no more appeal system. And so that would mean that a decision is final, and a decision is a decision.
Okay.
And so, all that being said, I'm going to turn over to Colleen Peterson, who's done great work and a great presentation on this, but that's just an overview.
Okay.
I had great collaborators on this. A lot of feedback went into this, so. So, the current transfer policy is... So for this new proposal, any student who transfers from one Lynn High School to another will be deemed ineligible to participate in the sport they played in the previous year, so that's staying the same. They will be able to play, this is a big change, they will be able to play in a different sport. So say they played basketball at classical, they could play a different winter sport. They could play a spring sport. Right now, they just can't play anything, which is really heartbreaking, doing these transfers this past year. Being the big bad, you can't play sports woman, I don't like it, so. I feel like this is, it's, it's, this will be a really good change. If a student transfers during a sports season, they will not be eligible to participate in that sports season, and will also be ineligible for that sport the following season, so just like I stated. So this starts once they're enrolled in ninth grade. From that point onwards, if a student changes schools, they will be ineligible to play the sport participated in previously, unless covered by one of the exceptions that we're going to show you here.
Okay.
And if they, if the A.D. and the principals agree that that specific exception applies, then they could play. So here are the exceptions. Change of placement based on special education criteria, disability, and/or therapeutic program need. Change of placement based on acceptance to an application-based secondary school that doesn't have its own athletic programming, like Frederick Douglass. Change of place, or factulary. Change of placement based on homelessness or foster care. Transfers resulting in disciplinary removal or as an outcome of an investigation by LPS, like say it was a bullying situation. Change of placement based on a court order. A change in residency resulting in travel hardship because the student's new residence is more than two driven miles from their former Lynn High School. But this must be supported by proof, a utility bill or a license, so they can't just be like, I moved with my uncle and now I live near. So it has to be supported with those documents. And a student admitted to an application-based high school from a waiting list, so if they start at classical and then they get into tech, they could still play that sport. And also, if they're at tech and their shop changes, and that was the whole reason they went there, then they could, they could still play sports. So, again, the key change is students will be eligible to participate in any sport they did not previously participate in. It eliminates the appeal process, and it adds provisions for eighth-grade programs, discovery, and Frederick Douglass. So if they are considered eligible under exception, both schools' principals and athletics directors indicate in their written agreement that when or more of the exceptions apply, there will be no appeal. So these are provisions for the eighth grade. So, because LVTI has the eighth grade program, so if a student plays a varsity sport in eighth grade and then changes schools, the overall transfer probably, the policy does not apply, because a lot of times, eighth grade students don't get into Lynn Tech. So the standard MIA Form 200 will apply in that case. If a student transfers after ninth grade to an admission-based school, the overall transfer policy does not apply, and the standard MIA Form 200 will be utilized. For high schools without their own athletic teams, students must play for the school they've been assigned to, so whatever is their district school, even though we have school choice, but it will just, that's the best way to do it. Based on the default high school assignment, that would have applied at the time they entered ninth grade, either Lynn Classical or Lynn English. Lynn Tech, you cannot, is not an option for that athletics. If there was no initial placement, such as a student on outside special education placement or a therapeutic program need, a student can make a one-time choice, and after that, the policy will apply. And that is policy broken down.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions from...
Can I just add?
Of course, yeah.
We tried to address the athletic policy in a way that things that are outside of the student and the student's family, outside of their control, that they're not being punished for or limited to by those things.
Okay.
So, those things could include, like, those exceptions that we just listed, that life happens, things happen, right? And so, really making it more student-centered and family-centered. We understand the initial reasons for the athletic transfer policy being put into place, and we want, we don't want to undo that, but we also don't want to punish people that have situations that happen outside of their control.
Right.
And don't want to include additional steps for individuals to seek options to, that is not necessarily an outside circumstance, if that's clear.
It is, yes, thank you. Um, I guess I just, well, thank you for that thorough presentation. A couple parts I really like are that they can still play a sport, you know, if they're transferring, they're a basketball player, they can go swim, or they can go do indoor track, or whatever it might be, so I think that's a real good component of what we've done here. Just a quick question, Form 200, you mentioned MIAA Form 200. Could you explain that a little bit? I'm a little unsure of that one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks.
He's my MIA person.
Yeah, no, well, it's important to have an MIAA person. We don't want to get ourselves in the situation.
Anytime a student transferred from an MIAA school...
Okay.
They have a form that's called a Form 200.
Okay.
And the principal and the A.D. have to establish that the eligibility is okay, and there's valid reason why they left, whether they moved or transferred through a private school.
Okay.
And you sign off and send it off. It's initiated by the receiving school.
Okay.
So they send it to the sending school, and you sign off, and then it's fine.
Okay, so that's just the standard MIAA transfer, okay.
MIA actually doesn't have anything to do with it.
Our Lynn policy, they don't, but I'm saying Form 200. Oh, okay, okay.
The two schools agree.
Then we're good.
It sends a...
Okay, okay, all right.
So, with us, I mean, you know, it's not a problem.
Yeah.
Usually the A.D.'s talk, when all that's going on, usually you can sense out who's ...
So that applied, let's say a child, student athlete, transfers from St. Mary's to Lynn English, that would, that form would apply as well, okay. All right. Okay, great, thank you.
I just want to thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah.
Everyone.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's, it's really hard to balance all these things.
Yes.
And, and I just appreciate it. Especially, I think the student athletes are going to appreciate it, because it's much clearer, I know from speaking to parents.
Agreed, yeah.
Yeah.
And I know this is a, this is a hot topic one, definitely, you know, some of the things that have happened in the past, so we do appreciate your attention to it and your, you know, your attention to the detail of it, so that, it's very helpful for us on the committee. Appreciate that, thank you.
Can I ask a procedural question?
You may.
Because this is part of J., and we're taking up other parts of J., we don't need a motion for this one, correct? We just are going to go through J., and when we move J., we'll move J.
Yes, I would think that's probably...
Okay.
...call will fall.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Colleen, Charlie.
Okay, thank you, Colleen and Charlie. So next, we have Section C. CHCA, which is Approval of Handbooks and Directives. So Charlie, you're still sitting there? I'm assuming this is yours as well?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. So, so the Policy Subcommittee last term recommended, and then the full committee adopted CHCA, and this was one that slipped a little bit through the cracks, and Dorothy and I have since had some conversation about it, but I'm here tonight just to talk to you a little bit about the implications of it on a practical basis, and respectfully suggest that, that the committee may want to consider, reconsider the adoption of that particular policy. You have the policy in front of you, and I've highlighted the provisions I want to focus on. One is that there's a requirement that the school committee approve the district handbook. So you were given, I think, by Ms. Jules, copy of the district handbook last night, but I have it in front of you tonight as a prop. What you'll see is it has policies that the school committee has already adopted. It has forms and, you know, laws and regulations and resources in it. It's not something we've typically put before the committee for an approval vote. We've given it to the committee as, you know, an informational purpose. If we did put it before the committee for a vote, what that would do is that would shorten significantly and hamper our policy-writing abilities over the summer. Summertime is a really important policy-writing time, and so this would make that process more cumbersome, and frankly, less, less of a quality process, and it would take longer. In addition, the school committee would probably need to meet more often in the summertime in order to adopt this.
Approve these things, right.
And then the second highlighted provision is all handbooks published will be made available for the informational purposes, and I have other props. You know, there are things we call handbooks, like the 504 Team Handbook and the Student Study Team Handbook, that are really how to run a meeting, and I don't know if that's something that this committee wants to receive or not. That would be a big change from practice in the past, so I'm just here to explain the implications of adopting this mask policy, and respectfully, and I know Dorothy may, you know, have a similar or not similar viewpoint on it, but wanted to respectfully suggest that, that this is a policy that actually would, would, you know, require some retooling.
Okay. Yes, Member Magnolia?
So Attorney Gallo, if you can help me understand, when you say that summer is a really important policy-writing time, what kind of policies are we talking about if this committee is sort of in charge of the policies for the entirety of LPS?
Yep, so, so we brought, you know, we've brought technology, we've brought, brought student assignment policies, we've brought protective sweeps, and all of those policies included many building-based representatives, principals, teachers, others who are available during the summer to collaborate in a meaningful way, and that becomes a lot harder during the school year, and so we would have difficulty having that kind of a comprehensive process if we have this policy in place.
Oh, so what you're saying is that the writing of policies is prohibited by this, not the adoption of them?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, thank you for helping.
No, no, I, I understand the difference now that you've explained it.
Thank you.
I would then recommend rescension.
May I?
Yes, Ms. Presser.
Insert an opinion here?
Absolutely.
So I, I guess I would not recommend rescinding the policy. Most of the policy reflects law.
Yep.
That, you know, there has to be handbooks with disciplinary things in them, but given what Attorney Gallo was saying about the difficulty, and the, the reason that MASCE has that committee approval part is really mostly to make sure that a student handbook doesn't change policy without the school committee being aware that policy is being changed through a handbook change. So, in, maybe instead of saying committee approval is necessary, it could say something like the Superintendent Shilishar alignment between school committee policy and handbook policy. And then, and then, maybe a qualifier in all handbooks, all handbooks that include disciplinary procedure or disciplinary policy, so that it gets away from the handbooks that, that you point out with your props.
Right.
Is that...
No, that's, that's fine. I, you know, the, the committee approval of the actual hand, I agree with you that the, the discipline policies need to be approved. There's no statute requiring the actual approval of the district handbook, so I think your suggestion would be fine, or total rescension would be fine. I don't know if the superintendent or administration have a recommendation on it, but, but just something that allows us to continue to do, I think, quality and comprehensive policy work, and, and this frankly doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I would certainly recommend that we leave it as Superintendent Shilishar alignment of policy and handbook, and that way, not only could we draft policy for review of the Subcommittee, but we could also try to, at the same time, just concurrently do some of the administrative procedures, right, so that we make sure that we're aligned on both, and that whatever goes in the handbook is actually, you know, makes sense for, for the policy that's, that's been redrafted or revised.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense to me. Member Magnolia?
Yeah, what if we just stop the policy after superintendent before the highlighted areas, and then just leave that sentence, the superintendent will use his or judgment as to whether other specific handbooks need committee approval, and then just end it? So...
So just remove the highlighted parts?
Remove the, both of the highlighted spots, and then the word however, because it just doesn't make sense without the second. So this is what it would read, as I understand what Ms. Presser is saying, this would keep that intention, but get rid of anything controversial. So it'd say the law directs that in each school building, blah, 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 and then end with, therefore, the committee expects handbooks requiring approval to be approved prior to the publication by the committee and/or the superintendent, because that allows the superintendent's authority...
Right.
To continue.
To continue, yeah.
And that would be reflective, actually, of the practice that we've done for the time I've been here.
Then that's it, yeah.
Which is that, you know, over the summer, I sent the handbook to the administrative team, and, you know?
Yeah.
How's it look? And got some feedback.
And then it, it ends with the superintendent will use his or her judgment, actually, it says a their judgment. Their judgment as to whether other specific handbooks need committee approval. That covers that we don't need all that other stuff.
That's right.
So you're saying just eliminate everything that's highlighted?
Correct.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Also, by doing that, it allows for printing...
That's...
So that we're prepared for the opening of the school.
Yeah.
Because although it gets posted on the website for access, we also print a hundred copies per school...
Yeah.
For anyone who wants a copy.
Okay. Just a clarifying question, does this change the employee handbook? This wouldn't change, like, LTU and the super kind of...
Two different things.
Sorry, those are two different things, okay. All right, just wanted to make sure.
We are currently working on a, a staff handbook.
Okay, so, and so LTU still would be involved in that?
It would be separate.
That would be separate? Okay, so the staff handbook would be separate?
And LTU is part of that work.
Yes, part of that work, right, right. Okay.
Does that meet your approval?
It definitely meets my approval, yeah. Is everyone else on board with that? Okay. So we need a motion for that? Is that the only one from Section C?
Oh, it is the only one.
Yeah, it's the only one.
Okay, so I'd like to move CHCA as amended, and I just want to make sure Ms. Jules has it. Yes, okay.
To the full committee.
To the full committee.
Right, okay. Second, roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So next, it's Section E. First one that we're going to talk about in section is EFC, Universal Free School Meals. So Attorney Gallo, is that also something you're leading us?
You are stuck with me till D...
All right, well, listen.
Till D four, Chairperson Dugan.
It could be much worse. It could be much worse.
So, I, just, big picture, Section E, EFC, EFD, EFE were three meals, food services policies that were put on hold because there was, at the time, a routine food services audit occurring, and so we wanted to pause those policies during that time. What you see in front of you is a collaboration between MASK, myself, Kevin McHugh, who's here, and Kevin Richardson from Food Services. EFC is a model policy from MASK. EFC is the Universal Free School Meals Policy, and what we've done in EFC is we've just changed some language to, to, to make this policy more Lynn Public Schools specific. We have had, I think since two thousand and eighteen, one free breakfast and lunch per day, and so the paperwork that's referenced does not apply for the Lynn Public Schools, so we've stricken that language in EFC. That's about it. In EFD, we have noted with greater specificity from the MASK policy, we're talking about one free breakfast and one free lunch per day, that's the underlying language there. We've taken out the language about parents and guardians being responsible for meal charges incurred beyond the meals provided, and then the hardship piece, because that's just not practice here. On the second page of EFD, we've taken out the delinquent accounts sort of stuff, and that's because you can pay for extra meals and extra food, but we don't here allow students to incur debt to do so, so that doesn't apply here. And then finally, EFE, this is a requirement as a minor corrective action under that food services audit that occurred, which is that we needed clearer provisions for grievances to align to protected class status, and also to align to civil rights grievance procedures that are outlined on the state's website. And so EFE departs a little bit from the MASK policy, as you can see, but that is directed by corrective action, and I'll be happy to take any questions, but I want to also defer to Kevin McHugh if there is anything that I left out in, in that.
No, and, and just on the, the reason we don't have any deferred debt or anything is because we have My Payment Plan, where parents can put money on accounts. So that's how we've actually worked it, and should they ever leave the district, they get a refund of anything on the account. So a child could purchase a second meal or a snack, or, and we use it actually for our staff as well. Staff can do the same account to purchase meals as well.
Okay.
No questions?
I think we're good, no questions on any of that.
So, I'd like to move Section E as amended to the full committee.
Second, roll call, please.
Number Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So the next is Section I. Again, I think IHAM kind of encompasses a few things. So Attorney Gallo, again, if you want to...
Thank you.
Kind of guide us through that.
Yes, absolutely, thank you. So IHAM and the policies there under Govern Health Education, sometimes referred to as sex education, and we want to be sure that we're being totally compliant in those areas and not leaving the school committee or the district vulnerable to, to any complaints along those lines. And so, these policies previously went through the Policy Subcommittee, but given that, those concerns, we gave them a second look.
Yep.
Just to make sure that, that we're being very careful in our approach. So what I want to start with doing is just presenting very briefly the statute on this. We're, we're grounding this in law. MASK General Law is Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-two A. The first provision requires a policy ensuring that there's going to be parental notification. We have that policy in the Lynn Public Schools, to be clear. That is policy IHAMA. The Policy Subcommittee voted to keep the Lynn version of that policy already, so I want you to know that that policy exists, I want the public to know that that policy exists. The only change that was recommended at that time was to retitle it to match the MASK, and actually, I think it's a federal titling system, so, so, so we're good there.
Right.
The second provision of the law requires that the policy afford guardians, families, parents, the flexibility to exempt their child from portions of the curriculum. This is currently in IHAM-R, and the Policy Subcommittee already voted to keep the Lynn version, which is the same as the MASK version, but in retrospect, I want to turn to the sort of second page on that, and you'll notice that it's really procedure. And so I wanted to, to, you know, rather than sort of have detailed procedures and, and sort of, you know, the request must state the particular conflict involved, is what it says in the current version, that's actually not a requirement of the law, and so, the procedure that's in the policy is more constrictive than the law requires, and so what I want to recommend is that we add a line to the end of IHAM. Exemptions from portion of health education will be allowed in accordance with MASK state law. We just reference the law and not go into these procedures, which in part do conflict with the law.
Okay.
And then finally, there is a policy IHAM-1-E, which is a sample notice to parents and guardians. I think uncontroversially not a policy document. Dorothy, I think that this probably didn't make it into the review and sort of slipped through the cracks, and I, I think uncontroversially, we would rescind that as not a policy, and so that's just a little bit of cleanup here tonight.
An example letter, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So those are the, the proposed tweaks, just to be sure that we're not vulnerable to any criticism whatsoever in this particular area.
Questions or comments?
Nope.
Good, all right. Seeing no questions?
We've got to move to I, the next...
Oh, I'm sorry, we do, yes, five and six, five, six, and seven, actually, right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so Attorney Gallo, the next parts would be IN, sorry, I didn't have my glasses on, IJNDB-S, and then everything after that.
Yes.
This is all technology?
It is all technology.
Okay.
So I think what we might want to think about, talking about first, is, within this is IJNDB, which is the current umbrella policy, and it follows immediately after my summary. And in working with Ms. Presser, I think that the recommendation is we, we rescind the, the IJNDB, not only because it doesn't match the model MASK policy, but also, we don't really have record that it was adopted. You'll see a note on the bottom of Dorothy's.
Yeah.
Yes, so it was found in the manual, we're not clear how it got there.
Okay.
In any case, moving forward, MASK has a nice IJND, which would serve then as the umbrella policy. It's called Access to Digital Resources, and a team came together to, you know, just again, make this Lynn specific, but what you'll really see is we're referencing, you know, privacy laws and, and the like, should be pretty uncontroversial. Kevin McHugh was part of that team, who is here today, as were our IT department, Shannon Bansfield, who's Assistant Director of Curriculum, and for Technology, as well as several principals were involved, in the hope that this would not be too controversial. We have even gotten a head start on administrative procedures and brought together a group last week that included secondary and elementary building-based administrators to talk about who would do what and how we would implement this. IJNDD, IJNDD then is the MASK version of the social media policy, again, with a couple of Lynn tweaks, but again, things that shouldn't be controversial. We, we don't, we advise staff that they should be careful in improper fraternization with students, sharing of information that's protected by FERPA, sharing details of personnel matters, those kinds of things. And then finally, is a revision to a previously adopted policy, IJNDB-S, which is Internet Network and Email Responsible Use and Device Care Policy for Students. And the change to that, if you go to the very back bottom page of that, is that the violation of policy provision now would say, the superintendent or their designee may from time to time issue administrative protocols governing the application of this policy, including consequences for violations, and so on, provide for trainings, develop administrative procedures, arrange for keeping of data. The existing version of this policy, which a lot of work went into, had procedures in had procedures in that section. How much we are going to charge, if we are going to charge, is there going to be an educational opportunity? Video, and just went into detail, and in retrospect, despite all the good work, has been really hard to put into place for practical reasons. And so those are the technology provisions. I'll defer to Mr. McHugh if there's anything to add.
Oh, I think he summed it up pretty well.
Okay.
Yes, Member Magnolia?
Okay, so this is super splitting hairs, but you have to forgive me for a moment. And IJND, the final bullet point on page two, shifts in voice from third person to second person, and it should be in third person.
Dr. Magnolia, I am, I did not, I failed to tee up Dorothy Presser, who shares the concerns, and please.
Because my, my one comment about all the policies was, it's in the second person. And that sort of makes it feel like it's segueing from policy to procedure for one thing.
Exactly, yeah.
So that the language should be changed back to the third person.
Yeah, and that's true in IJNDD as well, yeah.
Actually, the last, the paragraph that you talk about is actually, I mean, it's true that there in, especially in IJNDD that it happens, but the paragraph that you're talking about is actually, I think, identical in both policies.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, it's the exact same language on both.
Yeah, it is.
Which would you recommend is the more proper, appropriate place? I would suggest removing it to access to digital resources and keeping it in policy on social media.
I think that's the right thing to do.
Okay, so in IJND, remove the final bullet point.
If you are communicating.
Yeah, if you are communicating is the final bullet point. And then IJNDD needs to shift to third person. Well, at least great minds think alike. I'm like, voice change, voice change, that's not okay!
I did point out that I thought the policy subcommittee would pick up on that.
That is absolutely correct.
It is, yeah. Well, one of us said.
Maybe the one that teaches writing pretty much constantly, yeah. Otherwise, no comments. I think it looks great.
Okay. So I think now we're
Okay, so I'd like
Yeah, that is all Section I.
Yeah, I'd like to move I as amended to the committee of the whole.
Okay, second?
Number Doogan?
Yes.
Number Magnolia?
Yes.
Just to, as I go through the track changes version, if I make the change, the third person, you're fine with that.
Yes.
Yes, that's fine, thank you, Ms. Presser. Okay, next we have Section J. There's a few things here, so let's start with JF, school admission.
Sure. So JF is a uniquely Lynn policy. It ties directly to the voluntary desegregation policy, or voluntary desegregation plan that now exists. And, you know, obviously, tonight, in this short time, we're not talking about that larger policy. And so to the extent that we're not talking about that at this particular moment, JF would remain intact because it aligns with that policy with just one exception. And it is the TBE section at the very bottom refers to outdated language with regard to L students. And it is really also more procedure than it is policy. And so the recommendation from Amanda Campbell, the interim chairperson, interim department head for MLE, was to strike that language, so we're here with that. And I want to defer to Deputy Superintendent Gores as well, who was involved with this particular revision, if there's anything else on it.
No, that was all, making sure that it's updated to the current policies.
Okay. May I just make a, I saw a couple
Yeah, Ms. Presser.
he, she in the current policy, do you mind if that changes?
No.
No.
And then in the very first paragraph, the very last line, it says PIC, Parent Information Center is the correct, the correct.
So Welcome Center, we should change that, thank you.
The Welcome Center, so anytime it says Parent Information Center, it should say Welcome Center.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Find and replace.
Never works as well as
No, it doesn't.
Okay. All right, so J, everyone good with JF?
Yes.
Good, all right. JICH, alcohol, tobacco, drug use by students prohibited.
Yep, so what you have in front of you is the MASK policy with one tweak, which is that the MASK policy says that there shall be a verbal screening tool administered on an annual basis at grade seven and nine. The statute actually requires once in middle school and once in high school, so the recommendation and through Dorothy would be just to make that tweak. Deputy Gores spoke with the nurses yesterday, or I think last week, the, in preparation for this, and recommended the change as well.
Yes, we reviewed to ensure that this is the screening procedure that's currently happening, and they confirmed that it happens once in middle school, once in high school.
Okay, great, thank you.
So just for clarification, the tool should be administered to each student once in middle school and once in high school?
Is that accurate? Once in middle school, once in high school?
Yeah.
Each student?
And striking those seven and nine.
Okay.
That is correct.
Yeah, but to clarify that it's to each student, not that it's
I'm pretty sure.
Yes.
To each student, each student, okay.
Do you mean in lieu of by trained staff, or do you want to add the words "to each student" after administered?
This, "to" shall be administered by trained staff to each student, once in middle school and once in high school.
Okay.
To each student.
So after trained staff?
Yeah, after change, yep.
Yep, okay.
All right.
That's, that makes sense.
Yes, it does, thank you. Okay. So seeing no more concerns of JICH. Third one would be JJICA, oops, which we did already, sorry, moved that to the top. So JM, Student Awards and Scholarships.
Thank you. JM is not a uniquely Lynn policy, but I would say a minority number of districts have this policy, and Dorothy and I did speak about it. So in looking at JM and whether Lynn should have the policy, we looked at other districts that were similar to Lynn demographically. And actually, Holyoke primarily was a policy that we liked a lot. And so working closely together, myself, Deputy Gores, our Assistant Director of Compliance, Lauren Walsh, and Colleen Peterson, came up with this brief policy, and it's really themes of equity and access. The idea that, you know, the existence of a particular scholarship or award should not sit in a drawer. It should be sort of made known, and that everybody who is eligible to apply for it should have that equitable access to apply, and that there's no unlawful discrimination on the basis of any protected class membership. And I'll defer again if there's anything beyond, beyond those considerations.
Just to make sure that it is public and accessible, and that a family and/or student doesn't have to try and maneuver multiple people to get that information. But it's accessible.
I think this, we discussed this
We did.
Yeah, at length about access, so I think this is simpler.
It is, yeah. And being someone that went through this not too long ago, this would help, this will help families. Because it was a bit confusing
Yeah.
at times.
Yeah. Okay, I'd like to move Section J as amended to the full committee.
Second.
Number Doogan?
Yes.
Number Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, and then that brings us to Section G, which we're going to look at all of it, or we're going to attempt to, see how far we get, and that's all personnel.
Just give me a minute to
Yeah, I think we need a minute to just organize our papers here.
Thank you, Attorney Gallo.
Yes, thank you very much, Attorney Gallo. It's a lot of work, so I appreciate that. Does make our life much easier.
I think so.
Nice. Notes.
A lot, huh?
It's like a command center.
I know.
You do, yeah, I know. All right, so Ms. Presser, I guess I'll let you lead the way here.
Right.
Section G, personnel policy.
A number of things happened between last meeting and this meeting regarding Section G.
Okay.
It was not ready to go, for one thing. So it was, in our offices, we did the merge that we do to get things ready. And then it was sent to April Reed here for her to look through it. And in the meantime, we had a conference, and I got busy. So Ms. Reed got back to me with all the information. For the most part, there's a pretty good alignment of our thinking on this section, which is really good. So what I'm going to go through, because you, I didn't get this until this morning, you didn't get it till now, her notes. So I'll try to sort of carefully go through
Okay.
the combined comments on all the different policies. But I think for the most part, we're in pretty good alignment in our thinking here.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So GA, Personnel Policy Goals, as in most sections, that first policy in the section is sort of an overarching look at what's in the section. It is, we, this is one where we don't have one like that in our policy reference manual. You have it, there's no reason to take it out if you like it, and if it matches your thinking.
I mean, I'm always for if it's not procedure and it helps us, then there's no reason to remove it, right?
Feel the same way.
Yeah. So keep GA, all right. GBA?
So GBA is equal employment opportunity. This is one where Ms. Reed provided your nondiscrimination policy. Ours goes a little bit further than just the nondiscrimination policy in talking about, you know, matching each position to the applicant that is based on qualification, merit, and ability. And so you might want to just add that to the end of your nondiscrimination policy and use the nondiscrimination policy as the equal employment opportunity policy. Did that make sense?
It did, it did. So
So if you look at the notes from
April's, right.
From April's notes, what you're looking at is really that first paragraph, the nondiscrimination policy.
Correct.
The things below it are actually excerpts from the handbook, which would not obviously be in policy because it's in the handbook.
Those are in the handbook, right.
Yeah. So I guess my suggestion would be if you wanted to use the consistent statement of every, that you're using for nondiscrimination, that would be what you would put in the policy, maybe along with the sentence about taking into consideration meritability and qualifications.
Okay. Yeah, I think I'm okay with that, and then the sentence, I guess we'd have to craft it, right?
Just out of curiosity
Member Magnolia?
Can, what if we just got rid of the Lynn?
Right, that's what I
Yeah, and just take, take the MASC and add in our nondiscrimination policy, and that just makes it easier.
I think that covers it, yeah. I'm fine with that, yeah.
And, and so the nondiscrimination policy would be after the every available opportunity will be taken in order to assure that each applicant for a position is selected on the basis of qualifications, merits, and ability. And then it is the policy of the Lynn Public Schools not to discriminate on the basis of
Right, everything after that.
So it's the same list as is in the first paragraph?
Yeah, might not match exactly.
But that way, we've covered every base possible.
Yeah.
Okay. Miss Jules, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay.
I need to make sure I get it too, so.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That works.
School Committee Staff Communications. She, neither she nor I saw any reason to make any changes there.
Yep. That works.
So Staff Conflict of Interest. She had some notes about adding the ethics training and so forth, which are actually already in the MASC version of the policy.
Okay.
So I think, I think you could suggest in this one that take the MASC version.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
Staff Conduct. What did I say about staff conduct? So the, the Lynn version has a list one through five. The MASC version originally had that list. We took it out because we felt like really what it looked like was a job description, but it's only a partial job description. So we left it at just the top three paragraphs. So really, the direction is, you go, is at your discretion.
Um, when did I write my notes? I did discretion, so I wrote my notes to leave it, I'm trying to, this last night, I'm trying to think of what my thinking was, though.
I liked the list.
Yeah, I think it just kind of goes in line with what I said earlier. If it's not procedural and
It's not.
it's not affecting things, then we should probably keep it.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
She did have a suggestion, maybe of making it a paragraph, but not a list, but, but again, is, that's more
I don't think that matters.
More form over content.
Yeah, agreed, agreed, yeah, I'm okay with the list there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so next we have GBEBC.
So, and this is another one where she suggested that some of the things that she suggested were already included in the MASC version.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wrote a note, I like the MASC version, so, yeah.
It's the difference between two sentences and an entire
It is.
Yeah.
Particularly, I mean, there were some updates to Ethics Commission findings and regulations that are reflected in the MASC version.
So we're going for
MASC version.
MASC version, right, okay.
So I thought I heard some mention of this policy as we were getting ready for the meeting, so. This is one where the two policies take a bit of a different approach. The, the Lynn version is, is really covering the things the proposal can't contain. And the, and the MASC version outlines the acceptable reasons to submit a proposal.
Okay.
So, and then gives, also gives more information on what happens after the solicitation is made, if it's a successful solicitation. So this may be one where you want to combine them. It would make kind of a long policy, but it might make sense to do.
So I do have a recommendation
Yeah.
to the chair. So I wanted to combine them, and I have numbers.
Okay.
Okay.
This is the one we talked about earlier, right?
Yes. So if I may read the numbers
You may.
and just do the first sentence, so that if you have both, you can, you can follow along. Okay. The first is, school district employees shall comply.
So that's from MASC?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. But at the end of that, it says, no online fundraising may occur except as provided below or prohibited below. So those are words ended to the, added to the end of that sentence.
Okay.
So provided or
Or prohibited.
to below.
Yep. Okay. The second sentence in the MASC version should be struck.
The second sentence?
I mean, the second paragraph.
Second paragraph.
I'm sorry, I'm doing my best to concentrate here because I've got numbers and arrows. Okay.
Strike, the superintendent should have
Final authority, correct, okay. Then the actual second paragraph should read, a Lynn Public School professional may submit a proposal.
Okay, so that would be the first paragraph in the Lynn version.
Correct.
Okay. So that would become paragraph two.
Yep.
All right.
Paragraph three is in the Lynn version, and it starts with the if the proposal is denied, and then the bullet list.
Okay, so that would all be three?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Four starts back in MASC, any solicitation.
Okay.
Five is MASC, employees shall. Six is MASC, employees using. Seven is employees may only use crowdfunding services. And eight is a combination of two of them. So eight starts out with the MASC.
Okay.
If an employee's proposal is approved by the crowdfunding service, the employee agrees to use the donated materials solely as stated in the employee's proposal. If an employee's proposal is approved by the crowdfunding service, the employee agrees to use the donated materials solely as stated in the employee's proposal. And then it also incorporates the LIN one. If a proposal is successfully funded, the author shall immediately notify the grants office. So that's all the eighth paragraph.
That would all be part of the eighth paragraph, okay.
The ninth paragraph is MASC, if a solicitation is not fully funded. And that concludes the policy, the, the final paragraph on the LIN is struck.
Okay. So, just so I'm clear, nine would go on to include the second, the top of the second page in the MASC?
Correct.
Other, unless otherwise, but we're okay.
Yep, that's why we can strike that part.
That's why we can strike the LIN part.
The LIN part, yep.
I missed something, can you repeat that, please?
Um, yeah, on the MASC version, nine is on, continues on page two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and so.
Oh, got it, got it, got it.
Dugan wanted to ensure that that was, and I said, yes, that's why we can struck, strike that final on the LIN. Because that second page covers it.
Right.
And Ms. Jules, I'm happy to give you these if you need them. Okay. I have a lot of.
Very well navigated, well done.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, you know what, I, yeah, I like that.
Okay.
Perfectly.
Well, because I thought that that was a good balance of.
Yep.
Yeah.
Absolutely, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, alright, so that leaves us with GBEC, drug for, drug-free workplace policy. Which.
Uh, so, uh, the notes that were added to this one. So I believe that what, so, this is LIN's policy, drug-free workplace policy. And the question from April was, should we include the LPS? That LPS requires new hires to be scheduled for a drug test, et cetera.
Is that a procedure?
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think that's procedural and would be in the employee handbook.
Okay.
Yeah. Am I wrong to?
Then just leave this as it is.
Someday we'll just be scanned, our microchips will be scanned. Apple Pay, you never know.
I know, it's on our phones, alright.
So we just wanna add the MASC references, right?
Correct, the cross-references, right.
Yes.
Okay, otherwise they match.
Correct.
Okay.
So the GBED. There is the, the, there's more information in the MASC version about exactly what tobacco products. Are, and we talked about this also, it's the same list in the, that we did in the student. Version of the, version of the policy. The question that came up was, should we add information on vaping? It's actually in the MASC version because it talks about electronic pikes and others similar. So I would say in this one, you want the more expanded MASC version. She also talks about being clear about where it occurs, which is a little bit more expanded in the MASC version.
Okay. So where it occurs, maybe you should correct me if I'm wrong here, that's state law, correct? That tobacco use in school premises is a certain.
Also said, school-sponsored events.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought, okay, I thought you meant like physically where. Yeah, 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 okay.
That's, yeah.
Right, a dance or a prom or, okay.
I did not express that very well.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
So I think the MASC version fills.
I agree, yeah, I think that's a little more specific, so, okay. Thank you.
Uh, so GBG, staff welfare. So the, this is one where we might be looking at a couple at one time. So LIN's GBG is nearly identical to LIN's GBGB. Just twists our tongues up a little bit. And I think that, I think this is where she and I differed a little bit.
Alright.
In that I felt like, because partic- GBGB refers to tuberculosis, which is, that's outdated.
It is.
That that would be the one to rescind and keep GBGB, it's more up to date.
So GBGB, just so I'm clear, it's, it actually falls on the staff personnel security and safety?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
But are we doing LIN or MS?
Um. On GBGB?
Well, right now we just have to rescind GBGH and then we talk about that when we get there.
We get there, okay, I was just looking at them side by side to make sure we're, yeah.
Yep.
So we're rescinding GBG.
Correct. And then we'll re-assess when we get to GB, right, okay.
GBG dash R, staff protection looked very much like a procedure to me.
Yeah.
Agreed, yeah.
Agreed. So rescind that.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, GB, I'm not sure I'm flipping all the right pages here. Uh, GBGA, I believe that we both agreed that that should come out.
Yes.
Yep, I have that as well.
As well as GBGA dash R.
Yep.
Yep.
Especially because it's got procedure in the title.
Those are procedures, yeah.
Good hint that it's procedure.
Yep.
Um, so now we're to GBGB. And.
There was the question about the employee assistant program.
Yeah, and I, and that is actually in the MASC version.
Is it LIN's policy, though?
Uh, I believe her note is that it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Provides all employees with the benefits of an employee assistance program.
Members of your household, that's, that was my question. It was also members of the household, so.
So employee assistance provides a service to the employee, but they can access services. Which is referrals for services for their families.
Right.
Which would suggest that we should adopt the MASC version.
I agree, yeah. This is the talk with the families in that one makes it a little more.
Yep.
Alright, so adopt the MASC of GBGB, okay.
So GBGC, so, let me see.
Hold on one second.
There was a skip here, yeah.
Yeah, I think we did. GBGB.
MASC version.
MASC.
MASC version, yeah. That's what we're at.
That's where we are.
Okay, alright.
So GBGC.
I know.
I know.
Your tongue twisters, this one.
They are.
Not the HCBDR dash U isn't, but you know.
No.
So this.
I'm looking at the names, this is old.
Yeah, this, I, it looked, to me it looked like it predated Ed reform and it's procedure, so.
So we're rescinding.
I would say rescind, yeah, GBGC.
So GBGE is the domestic violence leave policy is an MASC. There is no LIN version, and I think you should have it.
I, I agree, I think that's an important one, so I would say yes, adopt MASC.
So the one question then that you might wanna look at is the first paragraph under the, the one, two, three. The employer shall have sole discretion to determine whether the leave is paid or unpaid. Some places just leave that so that the employer retains full discretion. Change it to say will be paid, must use. So that's, that's up to you.
Yeah, would it depend also on which union the employee is a member of, or if they are?
No.
No, I didn't know what leave policies that.
They're consistent.
They are, okay. So I would just ask if administration wants to leave this in or not.
I agree, I think that's, yeah.
Yeah, I would definitely leave it, I mean, it's not, I think, the only thing that I would recommend. I mean, we have, and Charlie, you may, can elaborate on this too, if ne- necessary. I mean, we have our guidelines on FMLA that are specific. So I don't know that we need all of this additional information in here. But if I were to take one, you know, I would, I would definitely. Yeah, all of this is based in the Family and Medical Leave Act. So this isn't really like our LIN policy is a federal policy that governs FMLA.
But the domestic violence leave policy is not FMLA, it's a different law.
GBGE.
I'm talking about E or F.
E, GBGE.
I would, I would, I would leave it.
So we don't have one now, so.
Yeah, so.
I would leave the mask.
You would adopt the mask.
Adopt it, absolutely.
And you're okay with the.
Yeah.
Paid and unpaid.
Yeah, because it gives hard discretion.
So I would think that would be something you'd want, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so adopt the MASC?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, I was one.
No, no, I, I just, I think that's one of those things that I don't know that I have the expertise to judge.
No, I agree, I definitely do not, no, definitely do not.
It's one thing if I'm combining two policies, it's another to say this is what you actually do.
Determining voice, yeah, right.
That's, that's a, that's a whole other can of worms.
Right, right. Okay, so that brings us to GBGF, which is, right, the family and medical. Yeah, that's the one you're referencing.
So I, I would, I, my recommendation would be to remove this one from the manual. All it says is that you're gonna.
Comply with the law.
Yeah, right, and there's the law there, so it doesn't really need to be in our policy manual. We need to follow the law.
And the same thing with GBGFE, because it's the procedure for FMLA.
Right.
Correct, so rescind GBGF dash E.
Ms. Jules, did you get that?
I did get it.
Okay. Especially because GBGFE is like twenty-seven pages.
It's a lot.
Section G will be much more concise after tonight.
So exciting.
It is.
Um, GBI is one where there were. There were two versions.
Sorry.
That mostly matched, the, the, in our, the MASC version, we recently added in the second sentence of the first paragraph, among these are campaigning for an elective public office.
Or ballot.
Ballot initiatives. Just to clarify that, you know, the political activity included ballot initiatives as well as.
Okay.
Running for office. Other than that, I believe the policies are the same, other than that. MASC has the, the, that ending sentence, under no circumstances will students be pressured.
Right.
Al- also the MASC version has the public employees are prohibited under state law from soliciting funds for political campaigns.
Right.
I like.
Well, it's state law. Yeah, I think MASC clearly, it's just.
Covers the entire.
I, I think it covers it all, and I think the stat, I mean, from what I recall from my ethics training, this is all part of that as well.
Yes.
State ethics, right, so, okay. Okay, so GBJ, personnel records.
This one was confusing to me.
Um, and it was confusing to everybody.
Okay.
Don't feel bad.
Let's work through it.
Catch up to myself here. Um, it looked like there were two versions in the LIN policy manual. And. The, the, one of them was a better match to the MASC version, except for some wording differences. That, you know, we say school district instead of school system in our, and the, and the pronouns. But it was, it was the bullet six, list of school system employees' names and home addresses will be released only to governmental agencies as required for official reports or by law. Is the additional one that was in one of the LIN versions and the MASC version.
Okay.
Well, there's a truncated version in the other one, so number six and number five are.
Oh, yeah, number five is.
Yeah, they're roughly the same.
I think it's, employees may make written objections.
Yeah.
That's different.
Number five on the second one.
Four and five on that document are.
Yeah. So, Ms. Pressed, just so I get this right, you're saying keep the version that has the six.
Yes.
Bullet points, okay.
Yes.
With changes to dis- system as district.
District, right. Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, staff complaints and grievances.
Where am I?
Looks like these are matching.
Yes, they matched, how about that?
So.
So we keep the LIN.
No action.
No action needs to be taken.
Events sometimes.
This is an interesting one.
I know.
Yes, so I, both of us recommend rescinding this one.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, because, I mean, first, it's interesting, I looked up school nurse recognition, it's actually in May. Um, and there's no, I mean, there's no other staff, you don't have any other policies about any other staff.
Any other staff recognition, right, like administrators week, whatever it might be, right?
Teacher appreciation week, there's nothing. I would take it out. Not that you can't still recognize your nurses.
We obviously would love to recognize our nurses, but I don't know if we need to. Yeah, have it in our policy manual.
Rescinding that one.
Yes, so rescind that.
Um, so GCA, professional staff positions, what were the? Bear with me a second while I catch up on my notes here.
Take your time.
Uh, so there was a little bit of an expanded. I think this is one where you might wanna combine, or you might want to just take the MASC version. The biggest difference was the, the paragraph, the school committee is at liberty to add qualifications. That would be the case whether it was in policy or not, because the school committee approves the job description.
Correct.
So if the school committee wanted to have particular qualifications, the committee is certainly at liberty to do that. If, if you wanna keep that specifically in policy, there's no reason to take it out.
I, I would go with the MASC version, it, it seemed overly complicated, the LIN version. Especially the, the most practical time to discuss and make decisions about above and beyond is on the occasion of seeking app. It just.
It's quite a bit, yeah.
I agree, and it, and it already says the mask one in the second.
Yeah.
Paragraph.
It does.
Established committee and or existing position is modified.
Yeah, exact, yeah, I think mask, the check mark on it.
I do too, yeah, so I would say let's take mask on that one, alright?
GB, GCB.
Alright, so GCB is, just I have this right, professional staff contracts and compensation plans, okay.
So this is a LIN policy only. I felt like the content is actually covered in other places and in the section on negotiations.
Yeah.
Which we've already talked about, so, um, I think this could be rescinded.
I, I agree.
I agree, I do remember talking about that policy with negotiations, so.
And then.
Rescind GCB.
And then dash R.
That would mean R would also be rescinded, correct, okay. So GCB and GCBR will be rescinded?
Yep. So professional staff salary schedules, I, this is one where our opinions may differ a little bit.
Okay.
Uh, the comment from April was that the salary schedules are determined by union, union contracts and individual contracts, which is true. Um, but the policy, but this policy really says that it's within the purview of the school committee to be establishing those. Um, so I think that this might be one you might wanna think about.
Keeping, yeah, I agree. I think it's important to know that the school committee does have the ability to do that.
Yeah, the, the, there is an MASC and there is a LIN version. The LIN version used to be the MASC version.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we just combined principals and administrators on individual contracts, because it's really the same information for both.
I, I like the LIN version.
And keep it then.
Yeah, I would say keep the LIN version as well.
Okay.
That's also what I wrote last night, so yeah, make sure my two brains are in alignment.
Um, so employment of principals, we have recently, this is another one where we might differ a little bit. Again, this is, um, I believe the LIN version is the former MASC version. Ours is updated because the law has changed that the successor contract for principals can actually be longer in length than three years.
I think we should go with MASC.
Yeah, I think it's a little more updated, twenty-twenty-two, looks like you were updated on that one, so, yeah, I would say MASC on that, okay? So there's GCBC.
So, um, GCBC. Um, so, this is one, I think this is really at your discretion. You have, you have information that's in the collective bargaining agreements. Um, and you wanna make sure that there is not a conflict that, that they match, right?
Yep.
That the content matches. The one thing that I often find myself pointing out to when I'm working with committees is, um, this, the last sentence of the first paragraph, when such supplemental assignments require extra time and responsibility beyond the regularly expected of teachers, they will be rewarded with extra compensation? That's the const- that, we have May in ours, then that's sort of a consequential little word difference.
Yeah, it is, it is. So we'll be held to the fire on that one. Um, I guess, maybe administrative team maybe, will, may?
I, I would say may.
May?
Yeah, okay.
It's not every situation, right, would require.
That, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a will means.
Will.
Alright, so keep that with the last sentence changing will to may.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, GB, I'm gonna twist things around.
GCBD.
Geez, thank you. Um, Professional Staff Fringe Benefits, I think we both reached the conclusion to remove this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I would say remove that as well.
And Professional Staff Leaves of Absence, uh, we also both, I think, felt that that should be removed.
Yep, April has that as well, and I'm okay with it, yep.
Uh, then requests for leave of absence, I think we both thought that could be removed.
Yep.
Um, Sick Bank Regulations by virtue of being regulations can be removed.
Yeah, cuz that seems more procedural, so where would this, I guess my question is, where would this, I did write that, where would this fall?
It's usually in the, um, collective bargaining.
This would be more procedural.
Right.
Yeah.
The administrative procedures that we follow.
Right, right.
The language of having it is in the contract.
Okay, so our staff would be aware just via their contract?
Oh, they know.
Okay.
And in the recent review of our procedures for HR, um, and/or lack thereof, right? We've developed, um, some forms, and so part of the form would be, what's the procedure?
Okay.
Right, so that would be very clear and outlined, like, these are the steps that you have to take, and this is what you need to submit to request a sick bank donation or a leave of absence.
Okay.
So, I think that's where that lives.
Yeah, yeah, I just felt it was important that we got that out there on that one, yeah, thank you.
G double C double A dash R. Uh, we both thought that this one can be removed.
Yep.
You said it so eloquently too, I know, we're just gonna get rid of it?
GCD.
I, I just had a quick question, GCBE is listed here, but there's nothing in it. Was that one that we came back to, or? So it's, it's here, but it's not in it, it just.
Um, that could be because I use a template.
Oh, okay.
And it could be, and somebody else had that in the policy manual, sorry about that.
No, no, that's fine, I just wanna make sure that something didn't get left out.
No.
Okay. Sorry, GCD.
No, that's fine. Uh, GCD. Again, this is something that, uh, I thought we both thought could be removed.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, GCE, on this one, the two versions matched. Geez, except for some, yeah, minor wording. April thought maybe this could be removed.
Okay.
Um, that's really, I think it's really at your discretion.
Again, I think I'd fall back on if it's not procedural, and it's not, and we're not opposed to having it there, I would think we'd keep it.
I, I just like the MASC version better.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'd be fine with that part of it.
You, in terms of the wording?
Yeah, the wording change, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'm a.
They have licensure.
Yeah.
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 Rather than certification, correct?
Yeah, just sort of an update of the, the term of art at the.
Yeah. I guess that's the, I was looking at the MASC reference manual, thinking it was policy, but it's not, that's what I meant.
Yep.
Okay, so hold on to G.
So we'll, we'll keep GCE just with the changes.
MASC reference changes, correct?
Okay.
Okay.
So GCEB, let me make sure. I, we both agreed this should be removed.
Yes, I agree.
GCF. So this is one where we might disagree a little bit, she wondered if this could be removed. This one is, this, I mean, the MASC version has a little bit more information about.
Yes.
How people get hired and screening committees and so forth. So I guess I would lean towards keeping it and keeping the MASC version.
Yeah, I wrote the same, um, I think we've had some discussions lately on the committee of things of that nature, so I think it's important to have that there.
So.
The committees and the screening committees and, you know, what exactly we're a part of.
Yeah, so just my, my question is, it's, it's hard to ignore in the LIN, the giant bold sentences. Um, clearly, the giant bold sentences are an attempt to ensure the power of the school committee. I have no problem not having giant bold sentences, I just want to call attention to the fact that in adopting the MASC version. There are no giant bold.
Yeah, 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 I was, I'm sorry, I, the same sentence is there, it's not giant and it's not bold, right? It's the same size font and it's not ducker, right?
It's not, yeah.
It is not. Yeah, so I would recommend the MASC version.
I, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody at some point wanted to make a point. So G.
They didn't like switch to Wingdings all of a sudden.
I know.
GCG is a mouthful right there.
Yeah, so GCG, um, uh, so I, it looks like part-time teachers is really not something. It, the LIN version has part-time teachers, it looks like that's not your practice anyway?
That's not, it wasn't the practice previously, but since COVID, it is.
It is.
So, we may want to think about not making it so we can't do it.
Yeah, I agree. Again, not procedural, so I see no reason to, to remove it.
Yep. Just, so keep the LIN version.
Well, I just have a question for the superintendent or deputy superintendents. The, the first paragraph of the MASC version, to me, would be better as a lead into what we do, cuz what we're talking about here are sort of details, I mean, that, that, that third paragraph is very, um, I don't know, I, I just, I like the MASC first paragraph better than the LIN one.
I, I think it still covers, right, uh, teachers substitute teaching positions.
Oh, it's the same, isn't it?
It's the same.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is make it first, I think there's something about putting that before you put the specific teachers, I know that seems like it's splitting hairs.
No, that's alright, that's why we're here, yeah.
So on, put it first under the substitute teacher sub?
So basically, in the LIN version, take the third paragraph and make it the first paragraph.
Above.
Above part-time teachers, yeah.
So that third paragraph, the one that begins, the school system will employ.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I just, I, I, I misread it, I just liked that as a starting out thing, cuz it was like, this is our overall thing about how we're hiring.
Right.
And then it went into the details of part-time teachers and substitute teachers.
Done.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, alright.
Um, GCGA, I wanna say we both agreed.
It's procedural.
Yeah, I, um, that wasn't on her list, but it looks, it's procedure to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. So rescind GCGA.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, GCI. Um, so, this is one where we, again, we may differ a little bit. Um, Professional Development Opportunities, oh, this may not be the one where we differ. Um, this to me looked like it, um, could be removed, and she agreed it could be removed. It looked to me like it predates the educator evaluation model, so it's somewhat dated.
And the PD opportunities do live in the contract?
Well, you have GCIA coming up.
Oh, thank you, right.
A more general policy statement.
General, okay, alright. Alright, so rescind GCI.
Yes.
Okay, we'll take a look at GCIA.
Yep. Um, and this is one where the two versions essentially match, except for some minor wording differences. And we do not have, we used to have four and five, we no longer have four and five in our reference manual.
Okay.
And my question was, do we use four and five, I, I just didn't know.
There has been cases in the past where someone who, let's say, were getting their doctorate. That they were awarded, you know, allowed to do a leave of absence, um, in order to do that without any penalty.
We currently have someone doing that.
Yeah.
So just.
So leave him in.
So leave him in.
Yeah, so I would say leave it.
Just change system to district, that's it.
And we also have, um, I just, the graduate study, research, travel are just examples. We have teachers that have to do, like, internships to actually graduate, or.
See, my daughter just did that last year, she had to take a leave of absence for a year to do her internship somewhere else.
So, do you think there's wisdom in including a more comprehensive list, is that what you're saying?
Or leaving it as a lea- leave of absence for.
Graduate study.
Right, like, even undergrad for the educators BA, right, they do an internship as well. Sometimes they have to.
Especially where we're doing grow our own educators now with paras who are.
Exactly, so if they were a para, and they would have to leave for twelve weeks, for example.
Leave of absence to further their education?
I mean, I, I, just make it something broader.
Dorothy, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think we could just say leave, leaves of absence for study, period.
Yeah, just get rid of graduate.
Yeah, we don't wanna exclude someone who's, you know, trying to complete a degree for, to actually be a teacher.
Exactly.
Defeats our purpose.
It really does, yeah.
And then the partial payment of tuition for approved courses, is that still in effect?
We do it for, um, fellows. I don't know that we have been doing it in general. It's, it's typically part of a fellowship program with a accredited college or university.
Maybe like if applicable, or.
Well, I mean, these are all, is, which, um, they're all sort of if applicable.
Right.
So if you might do it.
Then I would leave it in.
It does say for approved courses, so.
It does.
Yeah, so, so all, the only change is that number four just now says leaves of absence for study, and then we've changed school system to district.
Okay.
That's it.
Are we keeping research and travel with four or no?
That kinda gets embedded in.
No, it just says leaves of absence for study, because the assumption is that research is for study and travel is for study.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
I mean, as much fun as it is to just go visit the south of France, I don't think this covers just going to visit the south of France.
Take that off my calendar.
Unless I'm misunderstanding a philosophy of staff development, in which case, maybe. I am developed into.
Remember Magnolia.
Reigning on everybody's parade.
Alright, so GCJ, did I skip something? No?
Nope.
GCJ, okay.
So the two versions again match, except for some, um, highlighted differences.
Why do we have these giant bold statements, and like, June fifteenth, and, like, I don't understand this.
I don't know, must have been a reason at some point.
Well, you can direct me to un-highlight if you would.
I, I, I would like to.
Take it out, and that's.
Well, one of the interesting things that, that a lot of folks don't think about is how screen readers read different font changes, bold changes, et cetera. So what might be a kind of like interesting emphasis to us, to a screen reader, signal something very different. So I, I think it should be avoided at all costs unless there's a very specific reason for it, because our visually impaired folks don't need to be yelled at for teachers insert another professional employee. You know, this is, there's no need for that, just like the school committee having power.
Yeah.
There's no need to yell that.
Alright. Uh, yeah, that's fine for me, so just unbold and highlight it, and unbold and unhighlight it, excuse me.
Yeah, the highlights always come.
The highlights, right, that's come through, but.
Okay, so un, leave it in, but unbold it.
Le- right, so keep GCJ, but unbold that first sentence.
And unbold June fifteenth.
Yeah, and just out of curiosity, is that June fifteenth date consistent in the collective bargaining agreements in perpetuity? So we don't need to worry about that changing? Okay, then yeah, that was my only question.
Part of the standard, the standard, yeah.
Yep, then I'm good.
Um, GCJA is not a policy.
Okay.
We can take it out.
Should we get rid of that, yep?
Um, GCK, where are we?
Just fixing language.
Yeah, so your notes just say language.
Interesting that, um, April's thought this was procedural and could be removed. And this is something that we have in our reference manual.
Yeah, I mean, my thought is if it's in MASC.
I don't think this is procedural at all.
Yeah, I don't think it is either. I would say keep it, GCK.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the.
With the changes in language.
Yeah, with the highlighted changes, right.
Um, Professional Staff Time Schedules, I think we both thought this could be removed.
Though it's all contractual.
Yeah, um, GCM, she believed, I was confused by it, she was confused by it. Um, there's probably a history to it, but I think at this point it could be removed.
It can't be a teacher in two different schools.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Can't be a full-time teacher in two different schools at the same time.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think we can remove that.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say remove GCM, yep.
Uh, so GCO, so the, uh, GCO is one where, um, April thought it could be removed because it's in the union contracts, but I do wanna point out that not all professional staff are necessarily covered by union contracts, they could be on individual contracts, and this is, um, uh, intended to cover all professional staff and align with the model for educator evaluation. So I would, and it's also one where the two match, so.
I just would leave it.
Yeah, I would say leave it.
Um, GQ, I think it's one where we both thought that it didn't, was not policy. Um, GQ, I think it's one where we both thought that it didn't, was not policy, it could be removed.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay.
Um, GQ, A, where are we? This is a, this is a Lynn one only.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it, I think that a lot of this would be covered in a, uh, collective bargaining agreement.
Right, this was in CBA.
So, um, uh, her note was that it needs to be updated, and I'm not sure whether you want it at all.
Well, she's talking about bumping and bidding, but it's not in this, so that's why I was.
So we no longer have.
And we no longer have that.
She's saying we no longer have it.
Yeah.
But there is, um, where, this is talking about reduction in force. And when you get to reduction in force, seniority does become an element, and therefore bumping could happen, right?
But that's in the contract.
But it's in the contract. There's a section around reduction in force.
We wouldn't do anything outside of the contract anyway.
Yeah, okay.
The one thing in here, um, maybe in contract language or not, was, um, uh, the opportunity for reemployment. It's the next to the left.
Have to look at the contract, I'm.
What year, what, do we know when this was?
That goes back to, so, when I was hired in nineteen eighty-five, uh, they were just starting to bring back from the mass loss during Proposition Two and a Half.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And so I believe that that's probably in play, because there was such a big loss of staff in that situation, and they wanted to ensure that staff could return and had two years of a cushion, that we will take you back if within these two years we're still hiring, that you would be considered before we hired someone else.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, we haven't had that happen since then, um, but that doesn't mean it couldn't happen.
Doesn't mean it can't happen.
In, in the collective bargaining agreement, is there a provision for, um, first best qualified? Do, do you have that in yours?
So, the new contract does have a, like, a grid with a point, a point system, basically. Um, because we changed away from bumping and bidding and seniority dates to this hiring, um, applying and hiring. That if there's a reduction in force, um, although seniority does play a factor, there's a point system based on evaluation, based on attendance, um, that, uh, you potentially could have someone who has less of a seniority date because they had more points, because they never use sick time, for example, versus someone who's using their sick time at great lengths.
Okay, so for, for us, first best qualified means any person in the system applying for any job in the system is considered first best qualified, meaning they get priority because they're in the system. So that's like a provision of our contract that if you've, if you've worked in the system, you're considered first best qualified for any job application.
So in the new system of hi- uh, applying and interviewing within house, we do have procedures where, uh, we have to interview at least three in-house people.
Yep.
Um, the most senior of, and anyone can apply.
Yeah.
There's a requirement that you have to interview at least, at least three in-house. The most senior of all that applied has to be guaranteed an interview. So I don't know if that's getting to what you're saying.
It's, it's, what I'm saying is more like this paragraph, which is, you know, if, if I decide I wanna be mayor of Lynn for two years, and then I don't wanna be mayor of Lynn two years, and I wanna reapply, but I'm gonna apply to Northern Essex. Because I've worked in the system, I'm considered a first best qualified candidate. So I'm going from North Shore to Northern Essex. My experience in the system, if I stay in the same union, makes me a better candidate than if I went to Dean College, which is private, that, it doesn't matter, because it's, you know, not in the system.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Okay, so we call that first best qualified, which is that you, if there's a reduction in force, or, you know, some other thing. So that's, that's why I was asking, because I think this is unique then. I don't think it's covered in a collective bargaining agreement, right? So, if we were to keep this, it might just be that paragraph. All certified personnel terminated for purposes of reduction in force may be considered for reemployment as vacancies occur occur in positions for which they are qualified. Opportunity for reemployment will be extended for two years to personnel in the reverse order of the termination order above. If recall is refused, the staff member's name will be dropped from the list. That I think we should keep. If, if we still would do that.
Right.
Yeah, I agree. It's almost like a safety net, should things go south on us here.
Yeah, so we could strike everything else and just keep that as our reduction in professional staff workforce policy, because the rest is covered by the collective bargaining.
Oh, you have to remove, um, in that paragraph where it says reverse order of the termination order above.
Oh, yeah, so we'd just say a reverse order of the term, of the termination order, period.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's reasonable.
What do you think, Dorothy?
I'm, I'm just trying to think about that there are professional staff who are not teachers, right, so, um.
Well, this doesn't say anything about teachers versus.
Right.
Right, it's just certified personnel, that's it.
Right, so I, yeah, so.
That's why I wanna.
Be all certified and qualified personnel, and that way the qualified side relates more to a non educator, that they're qualified for the professional position. Would that make a difference?
I, I'm gonna defer to you here, because you understand the terminology better than I do.
I think when you see, when you, I see where Dorothy's going, like, certified immediately brings you to educator and instructional.
Okay.
And so, to your point, there are non educator professional staff.
Yeah, got it.
And that's why I'm wondering if we say all qualified, I'm, all certified and qualified personnel.
Yep.
Then we're hitting both lanes.
Yep.
Reference the other staff.
So, do you have this now? Do you want me to reread it, just to tur- double check?
You just want that word of paragraph as is.
One, two, three, and four, and you're gonna start with all certified and qualified personnel.
Correct, and then we get rid of the word above.
Correct.
Otherwise, it's just that paragraph.
Gotcha.
And that's, that's okay with, okay, perfect.
Okay.
Sorry that took a while, but.
No, no, that's why we're here, thank you.
So just above, okay.
Now, this is another.
Okay. Um, so GCQD, I think there's agreement that this one can be removed.
Yes.
Yeah, this would be in the contract.
As well as GCQE.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Um, GCQF? Where did we go in the? Um, so this is another one where, uh, I think we have to remember that not all, um, professional staff members are teachers. Um, because April's notes was, it's covered in the CBA, so it could be removed, but I think this is one where we need to remember that. There are.
Right, there's professionals that aren't.
Yeah.
Protected by the CBA.
The two versions, the MAS C and the Lynn version match, except for school system versus school district.
I think just.
I'm again, I would say keep it, yeah.
And can you unbold superintendent? Thank you.
Yes, I can do that.
Safe to say unbold things, right.
Um, so GCRD, um, is another one where, um, there is uh, a Lynn version and an MAS C version. Um, where did, where did? Sorry, I'm losing my place. Um, I think this, this is one where, uh, April thought maybe it could be removed, because, uh, it compl- it, it's a, a, adheres to policy and procedure. This is one where there have been some changes in the regulation from the Ethics Commission.
Mm-hmm.
They have.
And I think that the MAS C version captures those, um, captures those regulations, and it's probably a good idea to have it in policy.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, I agree. I think we keep it.
But the MSA.
The MAS C version, yeah.
M A S.
Yeah, yeah, so C, excuse me, GCRD MAS C version.
Yep. Um, GTA. Um, so it, this is one where it looks like there were two versions of the policy, and the only difference is the opening paragraph is in one version and not the other.
Mm-hmm.
Um, either one is appropriate.
I like the four paragraph one.
I do too. So the first one that we had in our packet, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So keep.
There's two Lynn versions.
There's two Lynn versions, there's just one that's the MAS C reference changes, so we're gonna.
So I'm gonna just use the four paragraph Lynn one, but we're gonna change system to district.
Correct.
Okay.
Alright.
GDB. Um, I think that we thought that this one could be removed.
So we had two, and now we're going to zero.
Two, three.
Wait a second, am I, am I reading things wrong here?
Wait.
No, it's three.
There's three.
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 There's two Lynn versions and a.
And an MAS C version.
C version.
Oh, wow.
So just make sure I'm, just make sure I'm telling you the right thing here. Um, April's comments was this is all covered by union contracts.
So rescind all three.
So we're saying rescind all three.
I think you could safely.
Well, technically, we haven't adopted the MAS C version, so we don't really need to rescind Lynn's two.
Yeah, Lynn's two, and then, but I do like in the MAS C version where that third part says school committee will set the rates of pay for personnel not covered by collective bargaining agreements, and then it gets into just some more specific, like overtime and
Mm-hmm.
how to handle all those things, which I think would be important to keep in the MAS C version of this.
Who, who constitutes support staff?
Paras. So clerical staff, yeah, it could be so.
It could be administrative, could be not administrative.
Could be anything.
Cafeteria workers, support staff.
So everyone who's a support staff is covered by a union contract?
No.
Not, um.
So if they're not all covered by the union contract, we need a policy.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's why I'm asking.
They are, my experience, they're not.
But then you have some staff who are on contract, but not in a union.
On a CBA.
Okay, then I would say we keep the MAS C version, we get rid of the two Lynn ones.
Right.
So like welcome center, there are staff, there are positions that are not in a union.
Yeah.
Annual contracted.
In HR, there are some positions that are not in a union, they're on contracts, but they're not in a union.
Operational staff who are.
Right.
Their own annual contracts, but not a union.
Not a union contract, right.
So then if you're, wanna keep the MAS C version, you should make sure that the statements about overtime are correct.
So that would bring me, yes. So of these people that are not in the CBA, do, is there, um, an ability to earn overtime for them? In their contracts? I would think it's case by case.
And some of them, if they're contractual employees, they may not have sick leave or vacation time.
Okay.
Depending on what they're doing.
Say that again.
If they're contractual, like, there may be a contract.
Yeah, we tend to follow on contracts.
For full time.
For full time, yes.
So what if we just strike the overtime provision?
So then I think what you're getting back to is the second Lynn version.
Okay.
Because it's the same.
It's the pretty much the same thing without the overtime one.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So we wanna keep that one.
So then, that's the one with.
For all contracts.
Three paragraphs, not four paragraphs.
Correct.
So it was the second one in our packet, correct?
It says all contracts.
That says all contracts, right? Oh, wait, does it?
No. No.
No, no, not that one, I'm sorry. So it's.
The one that references.
One that says.
Just know it has three paragraphs.
At the bottom, this policy was found, yeah, GDB. This policy was found in the Lynn online policy manual.
But not in the materials, that's the one.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all co- all contracts, got it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sure what you're looking at, okay, yeah, gotcha, gotcha.
So one, one more cursory grilling answer to make sure this is true of everybody who is considered support staff. Responsibilities of the position, qualifications needed, past experience, reviewed annually for compensation for all categories. And if they're in bargaining units, we do that. And then rates of pay not con- that, that's the simple answer, right, that the school committee.
The school committee.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, now that we've looked at.
That actually, yeah.
Yeah.
Seventeen different versions.
Okay.
E, D, B, C.
Well, you get lost, right? Forest in the trees, like, make sure, we don't wanna mess this up.
No, we don't.
When is the next time we're gonna look at that? Really, let's be honest.
Could be a while, yeah.
Were they back in the seventies?
But that's what I mean, two more minutes to make sure that's exactly.
No, I have no problem with it at all.
Okay.
No problem.
Um, so GB, G, D, B, C.
Which, by the way, you transposed in your notes. I knew what you meant, but I was like, ah, BD.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, GDBC, okay.
Yeah.
Dyslexia in my life.
Well, I don't know how anybody keeps all these letters in a row.
If you look at what it says, it's basically the policy, the, one of the versions, the.
It was just about overtime.
The overtime version that we just nixed.
It's the overtime version we just nixed, so I would strike that.
So we can just nix it.
Yep.
That was a long way to say something simple.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, GBDB, um, I believe we both agreed that, uh, well, April thought it could be removed. I felt like it was, um, at your discretion, but I would lean towards removal too, actually.
I don't know anything about it, so I'm gonna defer.
Yeah, I guess, uh, I would refer to the administrative team as well here.
I, I would remove it.
Remove it.
Okay.
Okay. So remove GDBD.
I, I felt with a lot of these, like, I didn't know enough to know.
I agree, it started to get.
Very in the weeds. H R, HRE, yeah.
Yeah. So this is one where April thought it could be removed. I would lean the same way, um, because I feel like the leaves of absence that are covered by law, you've already covered in previous contracts.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and it's even, it would either be covered in a union, a CBA, or in an individual contract.
Correct, okay.
So rescind GDC, okay.
We're almost there.
We're almost there. Did you really think we'd get through this tonight? You guys are doing great.
Yeah. This is my early birthday present for Eric.
Yes, very early, but that's okay.
Um, so this is another one where, um, there is an MAS C version, it pretty much la- matches the Lynn version. Um, April thought that they would be covered by union contracts, and I think it would either be covered by union contracts or in an individual contract, so it could be removed.
Yes.
Yeah.
I would say the same, yep.
Um, GDE. Hang on, let me flip pages here. Um, I think that, I, I think we, I, again, I lean towards removal, and, um, so did April on this one.
Mm-hmm, sure.
April's reason is that HR sees anyway, yeah, yeah, so I would say remove, okay.
Um, support staff hiring GDF. Um, again, yes, I think we both lean towards removal on this one as well. Um, again, yes, I think we're both leaning towards removal on this one as well.
I think there's a little reasoning there. HR does post those, okay.
Yeah. Um, GDI. Um, she wondered if this collective bargaining agreements would override this. Um, I don't, I think this is one where it's up to you whether you leave it in place or not.
Um.
Contracts do have a ninety day in the seventeen thirty-six contract.
Right.
I believe all of our contracts have, uh, even the teacher and co- teacher's contract, there's a ninety day.
It's a ninety day.
Ninety days is a lot less than six months, which it says in this.
It said six months and less, right?
Yeah.
So rescind GDI?
That's, that's fine, yeah, I.
Okay. Cause we live in the CBA anyway, right?
Yep. I I just didn't feel like I knew enough to know one way or another, so I'm just going with the flow here.
I feel the same way about a lot of these as we're going here, yeah.
Yeah, this is like, as a contract negotiator person, I'm like, I'm not touching that one. I'm just going to go with what you recommend. Um, this is one where, uh, April thought it could be removed, um, and I could go either way. I would, I would also lean toward removal, actually, though.
I would as well. We covered the, um, district-wide assignments in the, in another policy.
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so rescind GDJ. Alright, GDK.
I think we're, um.
Leading towards rescinding that as well, yeah, so all covered in the CBA. So rescind GDK, okay.
GDO, again, Lynn only.
Also in the CBA, so rescind GDO.
See, I told you it'd have a thinner section after tonight.
They are, I know.
Um, GDP, same thing.
Same thing, that's all in there. Collective bargaining agreements, okay.
She, uh, retirement of support staff, GDQC, again, rescind the way we looked at professional staffs, sort of the same parallel.
Yep.
For retirement and, um, GDQD. Um, again, this is a Lynn policy only. Uh, April feels it's covered in the CBA.
In their contract, yeah. Yep, I would think it would be.
Okay. That's it. I would like to move section G to the full committee with the changes as noted.
Second, roll call please. Yes.
Yes. Like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second, roll call. Oh, I'm sorry.
Next name. So I believe this for MASC, this was the last.
I think it was.
Um, I would like to hopefully just kind of maybe work with Attorney Gallo a little bit to make sure that what I have matches what he believes the policy manual should be.
Okay.
Um, I, at the very outset of this, before the two of you were on the policy subcommittee, when we started this project prior to the pandemic, um, the original plan was that MASC would begin with the hosting of the policy manual.
Yes.
Um, given, um, the work that we've needed to do over the course of the manual with, you know, the policies are online, they're in one place or another, I think it would help the district keep things much more consolidated and current and, um, very little cost, and I think it would be time well spent. It also means that people can do a keyword search of the, you know, either by code or by word, um, of the manual, rather than it's one long PDF for each section, which can be cumbersome to.
It is, yeah. When you go to print it too, it's, yeah. Um, so just so I'm clear about this, this would be on, in our policy, it would be a link to MASC where you would host it.
We provide you a link that you put on your website. Um, when there is any update to the manual, you just let us know and we take care of the update.
Okay.
Um, so it would, it would prevent some of what I think may have happened of people finding a document that they thought should be in the manual and kind of putting it in the manual.
Mm-hmm.
When you saw a lot of this was online but not in your manual.
Correct.
Um, it would, I think it would keep things much cleaner for you to do that.
Correct. Yeah, thank you. I agree, yeah. Any other thoughts on that one?
No, I think that's.
So I, I think I'd like to just publicly thank you, Ms. Presser, on behalf of the Lynn School Committee for all your work, and I know retirement's around the corner here for you, so thank you for everything and enjoy your retirement and, uh.
Don't flaunt it.
Couldn't have done this without you, I know.
Thank you so much.
No, please flaunt it, please flaunt it. Please flaunt it, so, uh, and I know, uh, the whole committee agrees with me that the, your work has been critical and essential to us getting this done, so we really do appreciate it.
Not only this work, but it has just in general been great to work with the committee with all the things I've worked on for years.
Yeah, yeah. I will pass that on to the other members.
Alright.
Did we get the?
So there's a motion on the floor.
Okay, I.
Adjourn.
Uh, second then, yes. Roll call please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Remember Magnolia?
Yes.
Alright, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.